How does this impact some of our heating establishments and stuff? Would they allow them to get off from the science also? And then following up on animal ordinance, I mean, ask Mr. Segler to be here tonight briefly to go over council. We have approved the first reading of the animal ordinance. As soon as you approve the first reading of the animal ordinance, then the attorney general changed their interpretation of the Right to Farm Act, which really does impact the ordinance that you have in front of you. So rather than asking council to have approved the second reading, Mayor Kenny and I had a conversation and felt it best to just slow the process down a little bit, have a conversation with city council, see if we're on the right direction, if we're not on the right direction, make some course changes, and then move that project forward also. So that was the reason it's on tonight's agenda. So we'll start with the water sewer bond project.
Good evening. This information has been before you several times, but we wanted to get it updated to you and then kind of explain some of the differences that we have today. As we've discussed in the past and as came out of the utility rate study, our water sewer systems depreciate over a million dollars in value each year, and so we consistently need to be putting money back into those to keep the systems functioning and proper. We have multiple capital projects that are needed. Some of those have slid from year to year, and as they've been sliding, we're getting to the end of our permit period for them, and the projects, some of them are going up and one of them has gone up significantly in cost. Even though we've completed all of our sewer separation projects within the city, we still have one combined sewer overflow that is active at the intersection of Fifth and Ramstil. It is still overflowing when we get over one inch of rain. We are continuing to look for places of infiltration and inflow. We found one major one a few weeks ago and are in the process of trying to get that sealed off. In the past month and a half, we also sent out letters to what we call the illicit connections. Those are connections where stormwater is entering the sanitary system through surface drains, yard drains, roof drains, those type of things. There's quite a few residential that are on that list, and the majority of the residential have already taken care of all those, and Jody Banks and the operators at the treatment plant have been following up on those. There are quite a few large commercial buildings that still have to separate, but because of procurement and bidding and design type of functions, they'll be, most of those should be completed by the first of the year. The biggest issue that we have right now is the sewer, sanitary sewer evaluation study that's been going for two years. The draft plan has been submitted to the DEQ. The DEQ wanted some additional information, and so Avemarsh is still monitoring the plant flows when we get wet weather events such as snow melting, storms like last Friday and tonight and even tomorrow. And the last piece of work that they are going to be completing next spring is an actual project plan force submitted to the DEQ that would make the city eligible for a state revolving fund for whatever project that recommends. In the interim, we're just going to continue studying the system and looking for every opportunity to get water out of it. So when we were going through the budget preparations for the current budget, we looked at all the capital projects that were out there. We also looked at, and there were quite a few that were small, under a hundred thousand dollars, but there were three of them that were rather expensive. I'll go over some of the details of those, but the big ones were the Riverbank Sewer Replacement, the rehab of the Sixth Avenue Pump Station, which were required by the DEQ, and the painting of the Maywood Water Tower. So it became pretty evident to us that we didn't have cash on hand to do those projects, and we were going to need to borrow money to do those. So we grouped a whole bunch of those together and anticipated issuing a $3.7 million bond issue this year. That would have covered all of those major items that we have today. We also incorporated money in the utility rate study so that the current rates are in line to pay and continue to make the principal and interest payments on that bond. As it stands today, we have several of those projects that are, that have to be completed this year and next year, but because we do not know what the recommendation of the sanitary evaluation study is going to be yet, or if it's, or what the dollar amount of that's going to be, and we don't anticipate having the real dollars. The process is basically that the study is going to say, look, you still have this much water getting into the system, and then it's discharging. So based on that, here are two or three different options, and here's the cost benefit of doing those two or three options. And the recommended option will be set up for a state revolving fund loan through the DEQ, okay? So we expect that to be in place next summer. The other thing that's happening is Manastee, and we've talked about the SAW grant, the Stormwater Asset Management, or Sanitary Asset Management and Wastewater grant. The city has about a $1.9 million grant application into the state of Michigan. They did not evaluate those based on merit. They simply made sure that each of the applicants were eligible, and they did a lottery system for drawing. The first two segments of funding have been issued. The third comes up next October, and Manastee is seventh from the top on that list. So if the funding continues for the SAW program, Manastee will get that $1.9 million. When that happens, it will give us a whole bunch of resources to study the system further. It includes modeling of the sanitary system. It includes a lot of televising. It includes a lot more exploration. So we're hoping that whatever project comes out of SSES, that after we complete the SAW grant and the portions of that study, we will be able to reduce the cost of that final construction project significantly. And I brought you, when we did the annual report of the public works, we talked a little bit about this. But we have been meeting quarterly with the DEQ and have laid out this, and they respect that. If we were forced to build a project next year, for instance, based on today's numbers, it would be much larger than what is necessary, and there should be less expensive ways for us to get water out of that system. So they are in full, at least in Cadillac and in the permit unit in Lansing, is in full support of the program that we've laid out that will essentially forego us submitting our basis of design for that CSO closure next year. And we will then proceed with coming up with a better schedule once we have the SSES and the SAW grant in place, and we'll push up that final construction project possibly four, five, or six years out. So really, what we've done is we've taken out what was anticipated as the equalization basin, which we expected the SSES study to recommend. We've pulled that out of this current bond issue. We've also done enough work on the Maywood Water Tank Painting, Renaissance Park Generator, portable pumps. Most of these items, we have gone and already started engineering work on these, and so all of these have a much greater accuracy in their numbers. The right-hand column shows, it shows, you said it showed variance, is that the...
It's the estimated cost.
Oh, the estimated cost. The only, the only one that has a huge variance is the Riverbank Sewer. And Spicer has looked at, the Avemarsh estimates has priced it with a local contractor on what it would cost today, and the cost of that steel and the installation from water is substantially higher than what we've had in the past. Other than that, there's some that are a little higher, there's some that are a little lower, but the numbers are much more accurate today. And each of those has contingencies built into them, except for the ones that may have already built out and have firm bids on, such as the Renaissance Park Generator and the Portable Pump.
And just to go a little further, on the bottom of that schedule, it shows transaction costs. You can't go to the capital markets without incurring transaction costs. One of the things that you have with the revenue bond, it's not a junior lien bond, it's a senior lien bond, and you're required to fund a debt service reserve account. We currently have debt service reserve requirements on our outstanding plan of bond issues, and this would require about $160,000 more that we have to deposit. Typically, those are funded through the issuance of the debt and depositing the debt service reserve. So the total estimated bond sizing for the projects that are listed here and the transaction cost is about $3.1 million. The timing for that is as follows. And I have had discussions ongoing with both our bond counsel from Miller Canfield and our financial advisor from Bear, but we've been determining the structure of the bond issue based on the numbers that Jeff and Sean have provided to me, and we're pretty comfortable with what that is and how that's going to be laid out. And I actually had some preliminary stuff today from the financial advisor. If council gives the green light to move forward, the next step would be to issue a notice of intent resolution, which I would intend on doing the first council meeting in November. And it's important to get that issued because there is a 45-day referendum period. So if the electorate gathers enough signatures, they can force that to a ballot. And you'll recall back when we were doing the wastewater treatment plant expansion, the first draft of that, there was a referendum on that, and it was defeated, and so we had to scale back that project. But that's a 45-day period. Assuming that there's no referendum, that would expire in about mid-December. Concurrent with doing all of this, we would be working with giving a rating for the bond, you know, preparing for that. If the referendum period expires, then we would go to S and P and get our bonds rated, and also prepare the preliminary offering statement, which is required for any bond issue over a million dollars. Late in December of 2014 or possibly early January 2015, there would be a bond authorizing resolution that would have to go in front of council. And then after that's approved, then you'd have the notice of sale, and you'd have a competitive bond sale probably sometime in January. Our financial advisor has come up to us that that's a really good time to issue bonds, primarily because many investors get coupons of interest in December 31st, and they're looking for things to reinvest in. And it's his experience that if you can do them in mid-January, that's a really good time to get advantageous rates. So that's kind of the timeline that we would have if we were to do this bond issue. And as Jeff pointed out, the difference between what we wouldn't get here and what we were looking at back when we were doing the budget and even with the assumptions that we made during the rate study is that we're going to fund this all at once. But subsequent to that, we're just not going to have good costs for the equalization basin. There's no way to size the bond because there's just too many unknowns. And since it will be eligible for SRF financing, it's a much more advantageous rate. So this is probably a real logical way to break down the issuance of the debt in order to get the projects done that need to be done. So, you know, the purpose of tonight was to kind of go through all of that and give council an idea of what we're looking at. It doesn't take long for the bond council to prepare the notice of intent resolution. That's pretty much boilerplate language that he'll dump in. But we do need to let them know if we're thinking we want to move ahead with this process and so we can get that prepared and get it on the agenda for council in November. So with that, I guess we can pay any questions.
Would you, would you address for your time, the fact that the rate structure, there was a utility rate structure, the eight and a half percent, the eight and a half percent next time, and then three percent, three percent? How that was structured in relationship to this particular...
Sure. If you go back to this slide, in the budget, we had just built in some rough numbers of about $3.7 million. The rate study anticipated $4.17 million, and, you know, we've talked about a lot, all of these things are based on assumptions. Some of the projects that were in that $4.17 million bond aren't going to be funded by this bond, for instance, the equalization basin. Some of the projects that were in there, Jeff was able to fund out of operating money in the last budget because he had some leftover money, so he was able to... And there were some assumptions made about the issuance costs and also about how much capitalized interest we would have that have changed for what we're looking at now here on the revenue bond. So I think ultimately, we're going to be, we're probably going to be issuing more bonds than what we had built into the rate study. However, we have time because it's going to be several years out to adjust rates if need be, and we're going to have to see how this all plays out and how the revenues are coming in and stuff. We certainly have adjusted the rates, or will have adjusted the rates, and I hope in the next couple of years to handle and cover that, the $3.15 million bond issue. But the cost of the equalization basin is going to require looking at all those numbers and seeing where we're at, which we would do anyway if we look at the rates annually. You know, we have a plan, but that plan changes quite frequently. And the more water Jeff can get out of the system, the more time that he has to study that and the engineers have to study that, the less that's going to cost in the long run. So it's our advantage to push that back and try to close off those areas that we know are having problems with.
What would be the yearly cost of that $4.1?
The $4.1, really?
Yeah. An idea.
That was around $300,000 plus in annual interest and principal, but it's going to be obviously less than that with this. And I think we assumed a little bit higher interest rate than what the Warren's preliminary projections are showing. So again, there's a lot of moving pieces there, and we'll have more details once we get some direction on what to move forward. I think the latest, it's a 20-year issue, but the latest, the latest schedule that he gave me for bond pricing, even the 20-year notes, well, in year 20 are only 3.68 percent. And I think we might have assumed like four, four and a half kind of overall. So this, that $4.17 is high in terms of what the annual debt service on that would be. So, you know, things are actually looking fairly, I think the latest rates have held up in the market. We're going to, if we do this, be entered in the market at a good time in January, and I think we have a strong system. I think S and P will be pleased that we've done a professional rate study that will help with the rating, although we probably will still get this insured and bring the interest rates down as well. So there's still some variables.
We have a bond coming off next year, don't we?
That's for, that's for transportation bond. It's for, it's a street bond.
I'm thinking a total debt, though. I mean, we got some coming off of this, and I understand this is the difference.
Yep, yep, that's right. And we're paying down, I mean, we pay down quite a bit each year on our bond as we go along. So, you know, we're, it's not like our debt load is continually growing. Every time we issue a bond, obviously that goes up, but we pay it, you know, we pay us our wages up and our mortgage stuff.
Most everything we're going to do with this bond is required by the state. Is that correct?
I'll go down the list very briefly. The Maywood Tank, we've had a lot of discussions on. We're at the end of our window to put another coat over what's there. If we miss that window, then the price of that project goes up about $400,000 because it has to be sand last year.
I just have a question from the Maywood Tank. One of the other things that I think is really important on the Maywood Tank is, is we're trying to do this as financially efficiently and effectively as possible. And one of the consequences, and Jeff correctly did at one time, of trying to lower that cost the brightest step possible, is the fact that that amazing paint job you see up there right now is not proposed for the future. I did what we probably called the sunset, the blues and the oranges and things of that nature.
Yeah, the new coated paint will be tinted within a clear quarter over the top of that, but it will be...
It will not be...
The image will be gone.
Right.
And to keep the image would add at least $40,000 to $50,000 to the project.
So I just want to make sure everyone was absolutely clear on that.
The $270,000, I believe, I didn't make industrial tanks that cheap. I think it was like $296, I think, when we did that, and that was 2003?
That was a little bit less than that, but it was 2003.
Well, this is a good price. It would be crazy not to take that.
Yeah, I have all the good documents already prepared by Dixon. Ira has given me, has updated the cost estimates and kept continuing to see him there, so he feels we're still in good shape with that.
All your, the assets that we're buying here, what is the asset life? You want to buy a 20-year bond, but is anything on here, say, have like...
Less than that.
Less than that? Because I'm looking at these small, like $55,000, $36,000 portable pump. Would we be better off financing that in a different respect than lumping it into a bond?
The only one that I would be, you know, I would answer the lifespan, you know, better than that would be the portable pump, which might be a little questionable. I think the rest of those, we all put on the books at least 20 years. And these are going to be pretty much remake, remaking of the pump stations and stuff, so I think that's probably a reasonable... The only other way to really be able to finance those is to increase rates and have them pay for them in cash, or you might be able to do an installment purchase contract over a shorter time period. You could bundle some of the smaller projects there, but I'm not convinced you'd get as advantageous as an interest rate you might. If you could do that and shorten that...
I think, I think the portable pump is slightly misleading, too.
Well, I want to explain that.
Yeah, I think a portable list station would be a better definition.
The portable pump is, is, it's obviously a pump, but it is, it will pump from dry prime. So when we're on a water main break, anybody who's ever watched a water main break, you can suck the water down until you get to the bottom, and then the pumps that we have break prime, they stop pumping, the hole fills back up right when you need it to be dry. So that's one of the benefits for that. If you look at the industrial park pump station upgrades and the Sweetnham pump station upgrades, the engineers have budgeted $70,000 between those two projects for bypass pumping. So they had estimated that somebody would come in with a portable pump, and they would pump around the station that we're rehabbing at a cost of $70,000. Our intention is to stagger those two projects so that they're not built at the same time, and we would use our portable pump to make that same function. And so the purchase of that pump actually saves us money, and it increases our capabilities throughout the system. If Arthur Street got hit by a semi and totally went out of function and the pumps won't run, there's no electricity to it, that pump can be set up right next to it. It's got its own floats, it's got electronic controls, and it can operate, operate as a standalone pump station. All we have to do is keep fueling it up. So it's got, it also is sized so that when we do work at the headworks of the plant, it is sized to pump all the inflow and all the sewage that's coming into that plant at the peak flow levels and bypass the headworks of that plant so that we can do things like maintenance and cleaning and stuff like that. So it's, it will have multiple, multiple functions, and I believe that the way that Jody and her group has set that up, it's going to pay for itself immediately.
You have any questions?
I know council recording had some questions about that, that portable list station slash pump.
At the very beginning, yes. And a trailer, I don't think those should be on there, and I don't know if you can buy that outright. I've said not, I was just against it, being on a project list like this, I was against it, well, buying it outside.
Right.
That was my contend all the way through on that.
We had a lot of discussions about that through the budget process, but even more when we went through the rate study. And what we were trying to avoid was double-digit rate increases and trying to get that down as low as we could. So when we looked at the different options on how to finance these, these different projects, we looked at many different options and basically grouping them together and deferred interest for one year, capitalizing the interest for one year, then allowed us to do the eight and a half, the eight and a half, and then drop down to basically the rate inflation for the future and allow us to build up enough revenues within the business to be able to cover the cost of that debt and then build up for future capital projects after this. Because our goal in the future is not to have to bond for these projects. That rate study is set up so that we don't get it in these positions again, that we can anticipate those, and we can fund them through systematic rate increases over time.
The cat, yeah, they're being the big unknown over the ten, basically.
Well, absolutely.
After we get past that, then hopefully we shouldn't have any challenge.
What about that Riverbank Sewer line? What do you have, you got 1.5 spot in front of that? Or 1.4?
Four, yeah, 1.5.
Yeah, if you're going to put each pile all the way through there, is that what you're planning on doing?
The 1.4 million, essentially...
Yeah, with each pile?
And this is one of those times where the water level has come up, you can't see the pipe, you can't see the red light that's there. But I have great concern, I get heartburn over that pipeline. But the, the design essentially puts a sheet pile wall along the river...
Four, 800 feet or whatever that...
Yeah, from Sixth Avenue. It's 850 feet, I believe, from...
Not each month, I can't remember stuff.
It goes from Sixth Avenue to the bridge, to the street bridge. And then it would construct a new gravity line back behind that, backfill it all level with the top of that sheet piling, and the city owns the majority of that property, and we've paid easements for the two private persons that are crossing.
You recall, I believe you at that point in time were the lead project on the one that we did over Sixth Avenue. You put the sheet piling in and backfilled it, so I, I think it's fair to say it's a similar project to that one, except...
Except it was made for.
Correct, and quite a bit longer than when we did towards that. If the water was down, you'll recall, that is the, that is the sewer line, which is hanging off of pilings and has so for however many years.
Let me go down that list to answer the original question of what's required. So we've talked about the Maywood Tank, Renaissance Park Generator, it has one source of electricity right now, and it's the furthest station from the city. So when there's power outages and stuff, that takes a lot of personnel to get out there, and there's a lot of, a lot of stuff running through that. So that's been a priority for several years. The portable pump we discussed, the sanitary terrace CSO closure, if you remember, we've got that weir that doesn't extend to the top, and we had a sanitary sewer overflow last spring. Construction of that is scheduled to begin Wednesday. So we are, we had to move forward with that absent the bond issue, but it's going to be reviewed with the council. We're going to be okay.
Yeah, depending on what we do with the bond, we can go retro into that period of time, and we should be able to pay for the capacity, kind of all of that.
So we'll have to front up with cash right now to meet our scheduled requirements.
What are you going to do with Third Street Pump Station when they shut down?
With Third Street?
Yeah, East Lake. As bad as Renaissance is, there's not a pump station for that trailer park or whatever. That's going to shut down.
If it does, then we'll have to flush that line out and mothball that pump station without any flow to it. And then it takes, it would, it would essentially, that line would go in hibernation up to Renaissance Drive then. The industrial park pump station, that's the only pump station we have that's on a single-phase power. This plant is upgraded to three phases. We've already purchased the pumps for it with existing operating budgets to try to get the cost down on this, on this bond issue. That is the number one pump station that we have callouts on and after hours. We have terrible problems with the electrical and the plugging with rag and stuff, so this upgrade will take care of a lot of that.
Have they had to be upgraded all the time, though?
Yeah. The Sweetnham pump station, currently it has two pumps. One pump does not function, and we have had backups in basements out in that area. Even though it's a very small area, we have sewer backups in basements because of that pump station can't push enough water through it when we get heavy rain events and...
You're going to increase the bond capacity?
We are going, well, we are going to change the type of pumps that are in there that will keep us, keep us right.
I think it's have to be a one.
What we have to do right now is when we get the high, we have set additional floats in that station, so when we get to a high level point, it calls an alarm, we send people out there, we set up a portable pump, and which just, that portable pump keeps that level just below where we're going to flood out basements. And then, you know, so that's, that's one of those things that we have to address. The return activated sludge pumps, that is the heart of the treatment plant. The pumps that are in there are the original pumps from the plant, and they're, they've exceeded their life expectancy. The way that they operate is the pumps run 24/7 wide open, and there are valves that then pinch the flow that's coming out of them to what the plant is requiring. What we intend to do is to replace those pumps and then put variable frequency drives so that'll, gives us a brand-new heart, if you will, to the plant, but then also reduces the energy consumption of that plant substantially. The Riverbank Sewer line we talked about, that's the North Interceptor. The Sixth Avenue Pump Station is undersized for the flows that are coming in that. The Sixth Avenue pump station is undersized for the flows that are coming in that and we are required by the DEQ to upgrade that pump station. A large portion of the underground infrastructure has been, been in place there for several years. This finishes it up by adding the pumps and. The flow monitoring is something that Spicer has recommended. Just like I discussed, we believe if we can deploy some flow monitors through the system, we could further target and identify sources of ionized and every gallon of ionized people out of that system will reduce five gallon, or five dollars per gallon in construction costs in the long term. And then we've got a portion of the plant that has had leaks in the wall for years and years and we keep pushing that repair down the road and thought this would be the best time to just get that done and clean it up.
Have you figured out how to repair that?
The engineers have a couple different, couple different options that they're going to be exploring, but we have not started any engineering expenses on that yet.
Jeff, out of this list here, if, if Mr. Daniel was here, getting asked a question, is nice to have, need to have, well, how does everything flow on that particular list in regards to nice to have, need to have?
We have tried to make this list need to have. And in fact, I mean, looking at the list, they are all need to have. These are, none of these are luxury items. The portable pump would be the closest one to a nice to have, except that we have real-world applications that will pay for it. And then it would make all the other emergency stations that we do that much more safer and efficient. So these are really all the need to have and these are items that are needed before we can get them slotted into our normal operating budgets.
No, they were talking about that with the DDA, that development across with that condo.
Right.
There's also, didn't they talk about that Riverbank combining, is that part of that?
Well, yes and no. The, the whole Brownfield plan goes through after, it's going to be on council agenda for the twenty-first meeting coming up, but it's got other stuff. So let's assume that goes as it's been laid out. The TIF capture period is a thirty-year period and it incorporates some of these projects, particularly the Riverbank sewer.
It's.
And, and Sixth Avenue. So that money would get paid back eventually. The, the first part of the TIF capture goes to developer costs, you know, depending on what we negotiate, but then it would eventually flow back in. So that would just be additional revenue that would be available to pay this bond down. But I can't go out and match the, the duration of the bond with the duration of the TIF.
But we could still use that if that project were to go through.
Absolutely.
And then that money that would be coming back to the city could be used to pay off this.
Absolutely.
How long does the developer have to capture that TIF? How long?
Well, the, the plan anticipates a thirty-year capture period. And that's for both the public infrastructure costs and for the private development costs.
And for River Park.
Yeah. River Park and.
And Norchil.
The whole South Washington area problem.
Two, two of the projects that were tied to that development are on this list and that's Sixth Avenue and the Riverbank. That project also, by the way, the current Riverbank sewer flows underneath their building and we've got no way to get down there and, and fix it if we have a problem. The other thing is that pump station that is directly downstream from that on RJO is also over capacity. So we've got, we have, we're required to fix that. Other projects that they contemplated were looping a water main so that it serves that building. Right now that building has no water service to it whatsoever. The old services that were in there have leaked and broken and we've just cut them and waiting for something new to occupy the building and then resize and re-tap the water mains. And they've also contemplated looping them for fire suppression so that we don't have a dead end at the bridge on the north side of Main Street Bridge, but it would go up to Short Street. It also would address some of the issues with Short Street where we've got a guardrail on the east side, a very steep bank and it's sloughing off. So this, the, the requested project would anticipate shoring up that roadway and stabilizing that. And then I believe there was some, some discussion on street improvements that were in the area and working with our, our transportation improvement program to do those at the same time.
And you said the developers would capture part of that TIF.
Yeah.
How, how long would, would it take for them to capture their portion?
I'd have to look at the TIF table, I don't have that in front, but it would be, it would be a, a few years, you know, gone.
Before we would start capturing?
Well, I, I believe they, they would get most of theirs upfront, but I think that part of that's a negotiation. So if the city absolutely said we want some of ours upfront, too, I think we could get that. But typically you see the developers getting theirs and then the public following that. But, you know, there's some options there. A, a lot of that, again, there's a whole bunch of hoops, as we'll see next week, for this project to, to go forward. When Mr. Faktiatus was here back in August, or, yeah, in August, and he presented it, there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this and, and so we're just doing them bit by bit. So, you know, this project is by no means show ready to go. We've got, they've got to get some grants and things in place, but at least it's moving forward, you know, stepwise.
Well, that's a good thing.
That'd be a positive. Part of the rate increase is to help pay for some of these because we knew we had these projects, need to do these projects. So all these go forward, would you anticipate barring any kind of emergency, would you be needing to look at more capital?
Well, this takes care of the, the full list of means that we have. And then we still have capital improvement program, which we have projected up over several years. The next biggest capital expenditure is going to be the results of the Sustentory Sewer Evaluation Study. Today, we believe that's going to be an equalization basin or essentially a tank or pond to hold all the excess flows that we are currently discharging to me as we like. Depending on the final numbers that Adam Marsh comes up with, they may say, well, that basin costs too much and there's some other options that we could look at, like lining the sewers or doing some others, some other work.
But by doing that, we were, we're obligated to do whatever remedy that that study says.
Correct. And so my, my, at, at this point, I think we would be looking at that project occurring, whatever it is, four, four to six years off from now.
The Saw Grant will let take care of any part of that retention fund?
It pays for the design.
Just for the design?
Yes, the design for the equalization basin was incorporated in the Saw Grant. And then actual design of the closure of CSO eighteen as well, which was a lot less expensive.
Would you, would you go over just a little bit more about how the, the Riverbank sewer, how part of that sewer line and where that goes underneath the building? Can you, can you explain that a little bit more for council?
The, the sewer line is, is essentially the interceptor on the north side. So it runs right along the river. When the sewers were built on the north side originally, they ran straight to the river and dumped sewer straight to the river without treatment. When the treatment plant, plant was built in thirty-nine forty, then an interceptor was put down River Street for the south side of the river and right at the river on the north side. So it captures all the flows from the north side neighborhoods as well as all the flows that come out of the hospital, prison, Renaissance Park, everything that comes down US thirty-one ends up in that, that line. The way that that line was built and the way that the pump station currently operates is that the pipe is always full of sewer. And the pump station cycles and some of that surcharge goes down, but it fills right back up immediately. And that pipeline, when it was built along the river, was hung with brackets on wood piles. And some of those wood piles and some of those brackets have just deteriorated. So the pipeline is no longer at a graded slope, it now porpoises, if you will. Last spring, we actually had a tree that fell down on the bank and knocked it off of four or five of those support pipelines. And so there's a large dip in that. The concern is that at some point, if we get a rupture, A, we don't know that it happened or B, we know that it happened because we're also taking in river water versus, you know. So I, it's, it's a real liability for us.
So you get some bad ice flows out there, you know?
Absolutely. That's a concern as well.
Yeah, that was my concern about five years ago. And I think we're just hanging on that.
I think that should be one of the top priorities.
That's your priority. And what are we going to do?
Certainly one of those, it's been a top priority and we've been, we've been kicking that can down the road, waiting for the right funding source. And we believe that this is the way to do it at this point.
Any other questions?
I don't have any other questions.
So Mayor, can you, just to kind of get some guidance tonight, if, if council kind of had more, I'll go ahead and have the bond council draft a notice of intent and get that on the upcoming agenda for, for council. Because we have to get that. That, that doesn't, that doesn't commit you, that just starts the reference. First step in the process. Probably the first meeting in November is when you can expect to see that then.
Okay, good.
It's not going to be popular.
Well, it, it doesn't require a rate increase because we've already anticipated.
Right, that should be covered.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much for that conversation. Plenty of zoning administrators, Denise basically, is now going to come up and talk about off-premise signs. Again, this kind of came up, it's come up over the last four months, five months? Starting in June. And Denise has put together some information from you and what we're really looking for tonight is, and Sean, please talk to him for a minute. He is looking for some direction from council tonight about off-premise signs. Currently, they're not permitted under our zoning ordinance. Off-premise signs are not permitted. Denise had been enforcing that, if you recall, and, and it's just not, it's just not the Eagles. It's action, action, termite, pest, the control, it's.
Yeah, actually.
Various other signs. We kind of stepped back and, and allowed some of those signs to occur while we were preparing this information to come to city council to find out which direction council wanted to go to tonight. Denise?
Yeah, background, that letter's had been sent back in June, a letter was sent to both the Eagles and the agents relating to their signage in July. I contacted Relay for Life because all of their signs were placed in the right-of-way. Signs were sent to action, termite pests, and tri-county pests for the signs that they had placed in actually on properties that were individuals' properties, but again, it wasn't violation of the off-premise sign proportion of ordinance. And actually, last Friday, letters were sent to both Fola Banker and to White House Realty because I found two directional signs on US thirty-one when I was going through on Friday. I try not to drive through town.
Makes more work.
Yeah, makes a lot more work. So first thing I want to talk about is the zoning ordinance as it relates to signage. The definition, and I gave you a handout, so pretty much all of these slides, everything's written out, so you do have the details to take with you also. That's any sign that directs attention to a business, commodity, services, or entertainment conducted, offered, or sold at a location other than the premise on which the sign is located. I have no issue with Eagles taking signs and putting it on their property for Taco Tuesday or for their breakfast or for their fish fry for that event. It's very similar to the sandwich signs that we allow the businesses downtown to place in front of their business, but the signs are located, they're onsite, it's not off-site, is the difference. And off-premise signs are, they're prohibited except as provided in section eighteen fourteen and that's actually the section of the special use standards that relates to billboards. For general organizations such as the Eagles, the Elks, the Moose Club, we actually define them as an eating and drinking establishment under the ordinance. We don't have any provision for civic, you know, pubs or something of that nature. They are thrown in the same category as what would the Bluefish be, the Boathouse, TJ's Pubs, you know, River Street Station, just to name the ones off the top of my head, where again, you know, we're allowing them to place a sign for their business, but I'm not allowing the Bluefish or any of the other organizations to place a sign. And I want to talk about the exempt signs in the ordinance. Political signs are exempt and we have a period of time in which we allow them to be placed four months prior to an election, seven days following elections, they're supposed to be, but those signs aren't placed in the right-of-way. They actually are supposed to be placed on the owner's property. If they're placed in right-of-way, we try and pick them up, move and place them. Actually, it's up to the candidates who are running to make sure that they follow the requirements of the ordinance. When Mr. Neeslam was here, he would actually stop, move the signs or pick them up. I don't get out of the office as much as Mark do. Then we have the temporary signs that advertise yard sales and those are permitted if they're erected on private property, were authorized by the owner. In other words, if you want to have a sign for your yard sale, you can go to somebody at the end of the block, ask if you can place them on their property. It would be up to that owner to do it or not, but you're really not supposed to be tagging them on the light posts, which everybody does. Construction signs, that's for when somebody's actually working on site. I do have one, I know I have to send a letter to because it's been up for numerous months after the project's been done. We do allow them, they can't be located closer than four feet from the edge of the right-of-way. And just to explain where the right-of-way in your residential block, for those that actually have a sidewalk in front of the home, eighteen inches back is where your property line starts. So it should be four feet back from that is where the sign should actually be placed to comply with the ordinance, but definitely not between the curb and the sidewalk. That is actually what we call public right-of-way or city property or part of the street. And we have standards that specify for that. They're supposed to be removed once the project's done. And though some people like to leave them there no longer, but, you know, we want them to be conscious to, we don't want to be a community of signs. And that's how come with the termite signs that people are placing and having in the yards, they spray one day a month. If they want to put it out that day, that, that doesn't mean they should be able to keep them up the whole season. And they were asked to remove them and both of the companies comply with that. Exempt signs, the city is actually exempt from signage. That would be the city, that would be like the DDA, that would be like the county building and because the government, we also include the tribe within that because they're governmental entity. That allows for additional building signage, weight finding signage, and of course, signage for parks. If we limited the parks to the amounts that would be allowed in a residential district, they could have a total of sixteen square feet of signage. We all know that it's not added, but especially like some places, First Street. Clear visibility of corners, this is an issue that I'm always kind of fighting with everybody. We want to make sure that this area here, again, this is that eighteen inches back between the sidewalk, you start at the corner, you run twenty-five feet down, there's a triangle, that's a clear visibility area. That's where we want to make sure somebody pulling up, and I know it's great for everybody who drives a nice big trucks, but if you're driving a car and you've got a sign or something placed within that right-of-way, it can create a visibility issue. We want people to safely be able to pull out from a corner, not worry about getting T-boned by somebody else. We want to make sure, keep that area as clear of sign shrubs as somebody starts planting mounds of plants, we ask them to take that down. And that's really a safety issue. We do allow under section twenty-one oh one point eight, that the historic district commission and the city council may approve exceptions to Article twenty-one for historically appropriate signage for community events respectively. That would be like the Volk Theater, the original Volk marquee sign and their marquee signs, those are allowed because of their historic significance, but they would never have been allowed that much signage under our current sign ordinance, but because there was historical documentation, that was permitted. And that is also for community events. If you wanted to approve signage for like the art fair, that additional banner for them to put up someplace other than the River Street Arch, you could allow that signage. And then I then took the code of ordinance out and took a look at that to find out if there was anything within that that we might want to take into consideration. And the fact that the maintenance area between the gutter line and the end of the curb, we actually asked the property owners to mow that grass between the sidewalk and the curb. So suddenly somebody's throwing signs within that area, then that property owner, when they bought to move, mow their property, they have signs that are located within that area and that can create a little bit of a nuisance for them also. And then I looked at the fact that I actually have friends who lived on a pretty prominent intersection and especially when the real. intersection, and especially when the realtors and the auction people come up and they want to place their one-day signs, they were knowing they can't put it in the right-of-way, they were actually putting it on their property, which is very upsetting to the owner of the property. He actually picked them up and he collected them in his garage, to be perfectly honest with you. But he also didn't like the fact that people would come up and knock on his door to put a sign in their yard, when somebody, three houses down, that's not on the intersection, wasn't having that same type of nuisance. So I also wanted to bring up the fact that, that there is an ordinance about peddling and soliciting. I'm not sure if you would consider to follow there, but I could see that as being a nuisance to a property owner. Then I looked at how MDOT and the county handle signage. And MDOT sign rules, they have a nice long section on political signs. I actually gave you two documents. One, specifically what they sent out this year because of the election, and this is the other one, as it relates to their other policies on signage. And actually, they're not allowed in the right-of-way. MDOT refers to, and they can't pick them up, the gentleman I spoke to at MDOT said that he typically fills up a truck bed at least once a week of signage that he picks up, and he's talking six counties that he covers for MDOT. So it's not just the fact that you've got staff out there picking up signs, then you've got to dispose of signs, they're being landfillled. So there's a lot of different things, you know, that they have to deal with also. And they are, of course, always concerned about clear vision with the interceptions. And again, they're talking about safety issues. They want to make sure people have clear visions, especially if you're pulling up a driveway, especially commercial driveways, that sort of thing, and those are detailed within the documentation that I gave you. The county road commission has right on their website that the removal of signs in the county road right-of-way, they want that out of there so that they can know, and they, again, talk about their real estate signs, political signs, sales signs, et cetera. Then what I did, after I had sent out the violation letters, I looked at the calendar, and I looked at July. Now, I'm talking about the signs. On Tuesday, the Shoreline Showcase signs comes out. We have the municipality arts and crafts signs that ran over the Fourth of July. We have the Lion's Fish Bowl, boil. We had the American Legion sign. We have the farmer market signs on the weekend. We have the Taco Tuesdays by the Eagles Club, again, running through here. And you can see, as I've looked through and added it up, and then they had their auxiliary breakfast. So when I looked at July, there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 days out of 31 days that there weren't signs in the right-of-way. I bended the same thing for August. Of course, we did not have quite as much going on because the big festival was celebrated, but if you can go through and see that with the sidewalk sale, again, we're talking that there are more, there's more days with signage in the right-of-way than there were days with signage not in the right-of-way. So I thought those were considerations that you would like to know about. I'm a visual person, so I'd like to see that on the calendar. That's what I have for that.
If you go back to that last slide there. I agree with you that we can be getting a good list, that's not my point here. My point, I see that like, the conflict with you and all these, I think most of these signs are like, what, about 18 inches by two foot?
Usually two by two.
Huh?
Two by two.
Two by two.
They're just, yeah.
Two by two.
Okay. I guess I have no problem with that, as long as they're picking them up. The ones that aren't being picked up are the ones that I really have a problem. I mean, if somebody wants to put them up for two days and pick them up, there's nothing to be, that's, that's nothing else in any other town, like the signs. But if they're leaving stuff up, like I know from this political run that we're having, there's going to be a lot of signs left all over, like, that's one I'm against. If you get the people maintain them, if it's not a problem to where they're putting them, I don't think we should have a problem. But if an individual, if they're just plunking it on somebody's property, not asking for permission, then I think we all have a problem. Or if they're exceedingly big to block a view, like you did for the 25 feet for the road for the intersection, then I think we have a problem. But if they're small enough and over and they got permission and are being maintained, I don't think we have a problem.
What about the, what about the signs that are placed in the city right-of-way? Do you have the same perception about the city right-of-way?
No, keep them up the city right-of-way, put them on private property.
I guess my bigger, bigger issue is yard sale signs, because they're, they are kept up on telephone poles, you know, and then the rain comes and they, they don't take them down, and they're blowing all over the place, and I guess that's my bigger, my biggest issue with...
Yeah, see, those ain't being maintained. Those should be addressed. And as soon as you see one tied down to a telephone pole, you got the address, go address them. I'm just confused.
But the question that...
Here again, he'll stop.
The question that came to council was from our civic clubs. Because if we don't allow it for some, are we going to allow it for the civic clubs? And if you look, August, I don't think that concerts or the sidewalk or farmer's market are considered civic clubs.
No, the Eagles, the Legion, Eagles, Legion, Moose, Elks, civic club.
So, let's see, that was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
We want to allow that to help their organizations because they do provide a benefit to the city. You can also say that about the concert series, the farmer's market, sidewalk sale.
Well, we'll give them the proper way. That's no different than buying a coffee shop that's been here for all the years.
Because, it's just these...
That means that's got to go. That's the only...
But how many more will we get if we allow?
Well, what if it's being maintained? Who cares? And it can only be so many intersections. I mean, somebody's going to have, you're not going to have 10 of them in one intersection.
Because I think right now, the most of them are not even on their property, right? No, the signs that I'm referring to, except...
You're in the right-of-way.
Actually, the American Legion takes theirs and they actually pull it out to the corner where, of Mason and US 31, where the old mobile station is. But if you actually look at where that property is located, you'll know that that corner is actually city property, because that sign actually is square, square and corner. None of these are on, none of these are...
Either all or...
Between the sidewalk and the curb. And these are the ones that I've noticed on US 31. And the Eagles, last time they had their breakfast in September, that sign went up on Wednesday. It was up from Wednesday through Sunday.
Sure, on Shoreline. They're on Cherry Street right-of-way, they're in the middle of Cherry Street, and there it is. So the question is, these signs are in the right-of-way, and they're not permitted, so we're just trying to gauge, we're just trying to gauge councils...
And if I remember correctly, the Eagles said that they really needed it on US 31.
Well, 31, and also they put it along at Division and River. Division and River was a very hard allocation.
They usually had it up on their property and Division Street. They put one by the A&amp;E service on the corner of River and 31, and then they put the other one by the post office. But then again, you've got people maintaining Blossom Boulevard, and you've got these signs that are being incorporated between. And I do think that we can authorize them to place them in the MDOT right-of-way. I don't think that, you know, I think that I would send George a letter, her question to that effect, that we have the right to even allow them to say, oh, it's okay for that because it's not ours.
I think that's an easy answer, yes.
We do not.
MDOTs, it's...
We have no absolute...
So anything along 31 there, between the sidewalk and 31, there should be no signs at any time.
Well, I think Denise though, is that the MDOTs rule three feet from the curb?
Yes, but when I talk to them, pretty much anything between the curb and sidewalk throughout the town, they would pick those up as they go through. And there might be enough room if they shut them right up against the sidewalk, but then if they're right up against the sidewalk, you stand a chance of somebody tripping over them, or especially sometimes walking, people walking, tripping over. As much as we'd like to help civic organizations, because really, everybody wants their signage on 31 to draw the traffic in, we cannot allow, because it's state, to...
Not in the right-of-way, but if they went to the property owners along 31 and asked permission, then they could put their signs there.
Right. And then my question became, does that create an issue as far as solicitation for those property owners to have somebody coming up and knocking on their doors to place a sign in their property? That was the other consideration I wanted to give to council.
Sandwich signs on River Street, are they permissible?
Yes, they are.
They are? Oh, okay.
All I know is that a property on the corner of Fifth and 31, anybody who wants to put a sign up there, they're fine. Just come ask me.
We just want to make sure, really, yes, we want to make sure we're being responsive to civic clubs who really feel very passionately that they're struggling, you've heard them when they were here, and they're struggling to make ends meet, and these are, and these are financially important to them making their obligations right.
Be honest, it's always been a good reminder, oh yeah.
Right, right. So, but we also want to be fair to them.
Right.
But I think we have to be cautious about, they're, they're considered the same as the Bluefish and River Street, and do we really want the Bluefish to be putting up vermouth shay signs all the way along, you know, these, you know, and doing those things? I don't think we do.
Well, what are we going to do with the sidewalk sales and, you know, and the concert tonight?
Farmers market.
Farmers market, everybody, they all look theirs in the right-of-way.
That was this other document I put in front of you, because I had mentioned before, I had an issue with, when guidelines for troops came through, somebody hung up and said they wanted to borrow a more sign and put it on the corner at US 31, advertising that it was down at St. Smarina, and I said that I could bring that to city council as a signage request for a community event. I was told, oh no, we aren't going to do it, and then as I went home, it was there. And I will tell you, again, I'm not sure which way to drive home some days.
You know, but for the ones that you just identified, for the sidewalk sales and for the concert, before the Denise gave you, they could simply make a request of city council, even the Shoreline case, so there starts...
I just sent that form.
April?
Yeah, well, it's...
That was another one.
It probably starts in June, I don't know the exact date, it's supposed to be Tuesday when we're here and they're there. But even, they could come to us in April, they could come and fill out a special event request, have it processed in April, letting you know that one of the requests we're making is for signage for May, June, July, August. I'm not sure how long the concert series goes, but for those month and conference series, concert series, and you can look at it from that perspective. The same thing for the sidewalk sales and the farmer's market. They could, they could do it and you could give them a special event. It doesn't change the fact they're putting signs in the right-of-way, and you want them to be putting signs in the right-of-way and not having other individuals put signs in the right-of-way.
No, the, their signs would have to go on private property. They could go to a private property owner.
Who's they?
Anybody for a special event, because again, I can't, you know, I can't authorize it in the right-of-way. But that also puts it on the radar of the council.
Also good.
But for...
City right-of-way, not in the right-of-way.
Not in the certain one.
Yet, dreamy.
Could, could the Eagles do the same thing?
If you consider, you could consider...
It's a city. Yeah, it's a city.
If you, if you view, if you view that every Tuesday is Taco Tuesday, the same as the concert series or the other ones, I think the answer is yes. I'm saying, if Taco Tuesdays is that, or...
So what we're saying is, we're asking that they come like, say, May or June, if they want to put their signs up. But they started, they would bring you a schedule of what they're doing with signs, and I think what that would do also is, that would give council an idea how much, and you may say, you know, these signs are up on Tuesday, but maybe you only have them the day before they actually pick up. So you can limit that time, so they're not going to have it out there for... But then they would have to get the owners' permission to put their sign out on... On the 31th, we can, on the 30th, right? So by through council, okaying it, we're actually giving media authority to okay it on MDOTs?
No.
No, no.
On the right-of-way. So what's stopping us from them pulling it out in the flowers right now, is our ordinance?
No, MDOT.
MDOT. They're supposed to be doing it right now.
But they're doing it.
I, I had sent...
You know, I don't know.
There would be a...
Change in permission.
I, I had sent them a letter saying they had to be...
We never gave anyone permission for those signs.
And they removed and took a case to talk to city council, so that's trying not to do that.
The issue we have is, is we have a zoning ordinance, we have a zoning ordinance that doesn't permit what's going on. So Denise is charged with enforcing the zoning ordinance, and she's got a section that she knows is not permitted. We've asked her to kind of turn her, turn her at a little bit as we go through this process, but if we're going to permit the signs in here...
They could only be on, and if, and like you say, the solicitation, if they just go and stick it in somebody's yard, no, that's wrong, the sign should be removed.
Oh, sorry, it's either, if we're going to permit them, they usually show you in the zoning ordinance, how they're permitted, or they should follow the, the special event request.
I like the special event request, because I think, I think it gives us a chance to monitor...
Can we put that in the ordinance?
This special event is already...
It's already...
It's already out there.
Okay.
Council, can they get it? That's the easiest solution.
What about the number of sites that you want to...
That is a...
Somebody's going to have to try to figure out, design to put out.
They can do that in a special request, we can get that all ironed out. If we have each of these organizations come through to council through a special request, you can iron out when, how many, where, those sort of things.
Duration.
I mean, some folks are going to find this important and...
I like that idea of doing it through a special request.
Yes, I, I like this.
It kind of gives, still gives some flexibility, but yet controls it.
It does.
And it doesn't add more to the zoning...
No, it doesn't change, it's not like you already allowed it and then you decide later you need to extend it. It gives us the fact that it's a nice trial period, I think it's a good way to try and keep an eye on it, and I don't know, maybe we actually do a calendar, so you physically see how many signs are coming up, so that we have a better understanding of how many they're hiding. And, you know, we've got, it's really nice, this is getting to be towards the end of the season, we should notice everybody that currently has signs saying, this is what you're going to have to do next year. And then we will, this is the form, and I have to go through the form with Chief Akon, this is something I drafted up, he kind of looked at and showed, kind of looked at, this is actually something they do, I'll be happy as far as those signs to try and maintain a calendar for you, so we have an idea on who the signs are. And if somebody's asking for, you know, something that exceeds what is a reasonable amount of time, instead of having something up for six days as an event one day, maybe they get it up the day before, or two days before. That would be your decision, but that way, I think it keeps them a little bit more under control.
I think this is a good idea, the bigger picture, now like I said before, are we going to address yard sale signs? Can we?
I think it's your...
It's one of those things.
Everybody I talk to, that's their pet peeve.
Well, I can, I can tell you, if you wanted me to, I could spend a whole day, every day of the week going through and ripping them down.
I know, and I don't, I don't think you should do that, but I think we should ask something, telling people, you know...
Well, I, I, yeah, I would say that from an efficiency of operation, I could see, I could see doing some, some Facebook posts and some various other things of that nature. I'm not sure it would be the time they spend for Denise to track down each one of those property orders.
I'm not, I'm not saying...
I just don't think that that's not an efficient use of...
I'm not saying that.
Yeah.
I think we should look at it though.
But if you would like for us to start pulling down all the signs up, I mean, I'm talking about the yard signs, the yard sale signs.
I think we should try to educate the public.
Okay, okay.
I think maybe if we contact the newspaper and maybe ask them if there's some way we can put that, because everybody publishes the yard sales, all in one section on the newspaper, that maybe they can run an ad, or maybe even if we have to take a little ad, we'll move the yard sale sign section that says just a reminder, yard sale signs are not allowed in the city right-of-way.
It'd be fun driving in the morning.
You know, so... And I think you've come up with a good solution. I think we can start by, you know, again, this season's getting to be towards the end, the sooner we educate people for next year.
And you'll have a difficult time though, because people, it's much more visible up on a light post, telephone pole, whatever, than in someone's yard. We tacked ours up on the post, because that's where it's always been done.
Okay.
But we took it down as soon as we were done.
I think that was the correction we needed. Thank you.
You did a good job.
Thank you, Denise.
Thanks, Denise. Thanks, Denise.
Yeah, we're not done yet.
How many seconds, two minutes, for MDOT to keep up?
Keep going.
The animal ordinance. I asked George to be here today to give you kind of a little bit of an update to a twist to the animal ordinance. As I said before, we passed one reading of it, the current ordinance. The current ordinance, and I have a copy in my hand, basically says, and here's the important section we need to think about. Non-domestic, so animal, prohibited animals be non-domestic animals. No person shall keep any non-domestic animal in violation of the Michigan Right to Farm Act or generally accepted agricultural management practices.
Okay, maybe a little bit of background would be helpful on this. The Michigan Department of Agriculture adopts GAMP, which is G-A-A-M-P that Mitch just mentioned, Generally Accepted Agricultural Management Practices. The Right to Farm Act and how that interplays with this, and maybe just understand the Right to Farm Act. The Right to Farm Act in part came about with the urban sprawl that was occurring and the idea that if a farm operation exists and the city is just growing and growing and growing, we shouldn't be able to eliminate that farm operation. We're gonna allow that farm operation to continue as long as they comply with Generally Accepted Agricultural Management Practices. So that Right to Farm Act protection exists only if you're complying with those conditions. Well, in May of this year, the Michigan Department of Agriculture added an additional category to its classifications under GAMP. And the additional classification is that any, and maybe I should step back one second. The protection of the Right to Farm Act is that the municipality cannot file or take action against a farm operation that is complying with GAMP as some sort of nuisance. And that was the lawsuit that was coming about that was eliminating the ability of these farms to continue to operate. So in May of this year, when this additional category is added by the Michigan Department of Agriculture, what it did is it carved out this other situation where a farm operation is located, or a home is located within one-eighth of a mile of 13 other homes, which is gonna cover most of the areas in the city of the US, yes. In that case, the protections of the Right to Farm Act are not available to that farm operation. So in order for municipality to, for someone to have a farm operation within the city, within that one home within an eighth of a mile of 13 other homes, the city has to allow it by zoning. So the city either as a use by right or a special use can identify districts in which you may allow a farm operation, like having chickens. But now that is something that's gonna have to occur within the zoning ordinance, not within the animal ordinance that we've been working with. Again, if council were inclined to say, you know, there are circumstances where we think in the city of Manistee, someone ought to be able to have chickens, that's really something that needs to go back to the planning commission. We have the planning commission look at and decide whether or not that should be a use by right or a special use within any of our various districts.
Absent us doing something at the planning commission level, if we were to approve this second reading with the new interpretation of the Right to Farm Act for the Generally Accepted Agricultural Management Practices, it would essentially not allow any, would not allow any non-domestic animals permitted in the city of Manistee.
Well, I would add to that though, whether we do or not, it doesn't matter that they're not permitted as it is. By that change in the law in May, unless it's a permitted use within a district in the city, it's not allowed.
So the current animal ordinance, which is not this one right here, I think it does state chickens or...
Yeah, and...
So that's a violation?
It really can't override that other law system that we in zoning, we need to identify those areas if we're gonna allow it and permit them.
So long as we don't change it, they're not allowed in the city.
That's correct.
Right.
And the state did designate specifically what a domesticated animal is?
Well, it's farm operations that are not permitted. Farm operations include, you know, the protection that people are dealing with chickens is, well, if I have all these chickens and I have one egg that I give to a neighbor or sell to a neighbor, then that's a farming operation. So it's not so much a definition of that, but chickens certainly fall within, yeah, within, in that definition, but also within the Right to Farm Act.
Given our current animal ordinance in the state, we do have, I think, a few property owners who have chickens, who raise them for their eggs. Are they a violation now?
Yes.
Under state law.
And local law in that we are not, we don't have a permitted, in our zoning, it's not even...
It's gotta be permitted for zoning. And I looked at, I saw one for, I think, like Seattle, and I thought they did a nice job with their zoning because it stated how many chickens they could have, you know, that they were small farm animals.
The cows.
Right, right. But I don't wanna be so big brotherish. We've had homeowners who do have, I think, chickens and maybe some other small animals, we don't know, that are considered domesticated, that are doing, that aren't violating, they're bothering their neighbors.
Good chicken owners, bad chicken owners?
Like good pet owners, bad pet owners.
Good pet owners, bad pet owners. Absolutely.
I would like to ask the planning commission to do that. Because there are others, I mean, you don't have to recreate the wheel. I think there are some good ones out there that really, you know, like say they're small farm animals, they limit the number, you know, so I think there's some templates out there that they could follow.
Yeah, I've read some of those as well.
But it would require us to look at it from a zoning perspective. So rather than, so again, rather than trying to push this through, the question tonight was, council, would you want us to request that the planning commission become involved?
I would, yeah.
I'd support it.
I don't have a problem with it, as long as, a lot of these homes are half lots, you know, if you've got...
When I think the zoning ones I saw, you know, they take all that into consideration, how much land that you have.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with it, as long as, you know...
The only problem I guess you can have is just like you meant to, not limit the number. You can't have 50 chickens, but I mean, you could have, you know...
Well, I think they said so many, or so many square feet you could have...
But that can be part of a special use, that can be part of, correct?
Especially if required owners to pay $750 to ask the question.
Oh, could that be part of a permitted use?
A permitted use, actually, I pulled up two. I did one from the City of Ann Arbor and one from Traverse City. And even though these are actually out of the code of ordinance, I think it kind of addresses what you're saying. It limits it to like four hens, roosters are prohibited. It says that you can't slaughter them outdoors.
Don't think about it.
They have to be provided and remain within a fully enclosed shelter with an optional cover fence enclosure in your yard. Enclosures shall be at least 25 feet from any dwelling on a neighboring parcel. And no chickens shall be kept on parcels with more than one dwelling. So in other words, it can go with, and I think they were limiting it to just single family and duplexes, but like a multifamily unit wouldn't be allowed to have them. So that would be, you know, consideration too. And it's kind of pretty similar that I found also in Ann Arbor.
Is this something that the planning...
Well, you could, yeah, we could discuss that.
Yeah, I would really...
Oh, let's look at it.
That's good.
As we thought, I mean...
And are you looking at chickens and ducks? I mean, are you looking at...
Honestly, if it's a small, I've heard people have small pet pigs, you know, if it's a small, non-domesticated, not permitted.
I think I'll talk to, actually, Kurt Schindler's gonna be here Wednesday. At that evening, I'll ask him if they have some draft language and see what else can come up. It's all starting to...
As soon as they make numbers, maybe he's caught in this loop of, you know, interpreting...
I certainly...
So we just wanted to gain your direction if you need to...
I can put in that 606.04, removal of defecation. I walk the riverwalk every morning and I probably shove four or five loaves off the riverwalk every morning.
That's not necessarily people walking their dogs, that could just be dogs.
No, no, well, I don't lose. No, it's people walking their dog early in the morning.
That's bad.
People put that, they have to make a lot of questions about it.
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, Sidney.